If our chief financial officer, that he would like to share, and then I'll share the ground rules for markup and we'll open the meeting for board members for discussion. Following tonight, the board will vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2026 at next year's, next week's meeting on March 19th. At this time, I'll turn things over to Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with just acknowledging all of the work of our budget team that are here tonight. I want to thank them for their work in developing the proposed budget as well as working collaboratively with schools and departments for several months and taking on board member feedback so that we can bring forward to you the revenue update and markup. And we've aligned all of our investments to our continued support of our Vision 2025 strategic plan. So you'll see all of the investments that were proposed, as well as those that you'll see in markup, are specifically aligned to the strategic plan. On February 5th, our team submitted the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget and CIP to the school board. The school board then held a public meeting on the proposed budget on February 10th, followed by a public hearing on February 19th. And I really want to take some time to thank and acknowledge the board for your time, attention, and engagement throughout this budget process and all of the feedback that was captured. You'll see your voice in this particular markup as well. You've reviewed and analyzed the budget for, to provide some critical suggestions and proactive involvement throughout the proposal, really ensured the alignment of the strategic plan. So I want to both acknowledge and thank the board for that support. And at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Youssef, our chief financial officer, to provide an update on the fiscal 2026 budget. We'll also go through some of the additions that you'll see that were not in the original proposed budget. And also, Mr. Vernon Bach will share a couple of quick updates as it relates to facilities and some changes that we've made there. So we'll start with Mr. Youssef.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. McDade. This will be very brief. A quick recap of where we are with our state revenues. On February 22nd, the General Assembly approved a budget with additional K-12 resources. Based on the preliminary estimate of net additional, the net additional PWCS resources for all funds amounted to approximately $24 million additionally from where we proposed our budget. These adjustments include the elimination of the support cap at $20 million and additional support for special education at $4 million. VDOE estimates or the calc sheets have been posted. Our budget, our proposed budget is based on the governor's budget. There is, the governor has to sign this budget. I believe the General Assembly will be reconvening in April 2nd, 2025, so we should have more information as to what gets passed. But right now, as the General Assembly stands, it's $24 million extra for us this year, In terms of our county revenues, just a few dates. Next week, the BOCs will meet to include their revenue update. On March 20th, I believe they will be scheduled to advertise its real property tax rate of 92 cents, which is revenue neutral from their perspective. On March 26th, all other taxes will be advertised. They'll do a budget recap on April 8th, and then following that, they will do an approval. So right now, we are waiting for the county to finalize their projections. Just to quickly recap, everybody's seen this slide, slides, but for our teachers, certified employees, 6.8% increase overall, 7.4% for classified, and administrators are at 6.8%. Similarly, over the last five years, we have 5%, 7%, 5%, between 5.2% and 6.1% and 6.8% and 7.4%. I'm going to send, I'm going to ask Mr. Bach to talk about the next slide, and this is construction items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Youssef. What I have before you here is a little bit of a compression of the schedule to ensure that we have, you know, turf practice fields at all of our high schools. And we do have, they make seven of our high schools currently, so this will balance us out to ensure that we have turf at all of our practice fields. And you can see the schedule there, tackling three in 2026, and then three more in 2027, and then rounding it out with two more in 2028. Also want to make mention, and Mr. Wilk, I think, brought this, this forward as a concern coming from the school. Our risk management team went out, along with our facilities team, to assess a sidewalk location there, running right down the main entrance into Potomac. And it is, we believe it definitely is necessary. We have moved aggressively to complete this. We'll be using this year's funds to complete that, and we're going to be starting this in April and completing it in April. And this will include a sidewalk down the drive next to the ravine area. There is some existing lighting there, but it doesn't cast a lot of light. We'll be upgrading those light posts with much brighter lighting to cast in both directions. And then we'll also be constructing two crosswalks, one coming from the front of the school, connecting to that sidewalk, which will allow students to walk down, and then pick up another crosswalk, which will be lighted to gain access into the neighborhood on Eagle Ridge Drive. So that's all going to be progressing rather quickly, and it does not appear in the CIP because we'll be tackling it with this year's funds. So that's my update. Yep.
All right. So next, we're going to start the review of the summary of markup. Just a quick reminder that there's no additional revenues assumed at this time, so what you see is based on our current revenue and the proposal that was brought before the board, with the understanding that there may be final action that may come from the state and the county, at which time we'll be prepared to address that. But certainly, we can only approve a budget with actual revenue. Some of the expenditures that you see here will add an additional $7 million to the budget in markup, and an additional 41 FTE, which will all be directly school-based or positioned to directly support schools. So I'll walk through all of those investments. These investments, as you'll see, each one does align specifically with objectives within the strategic plan and our direct result, feedback from both our board members, as well as a review from our academic teams and, and our operational teams. So the first thing you'll see here, and we heard a lot of, got a lot of discussion and a lot of feedback from several board members around the need to emphasize, place more investments in science as well as mathematics. So you'll see that pretty prevalent here in the budget. The first thing you see here is two additional science specialists, so to make sure that we have coverage for elementary as well as middle and high. And then funding for academic competition, travel, and participation. You'll see $100,000 there, so that there's never a situation where a school team that has to compete, you know, doesn't have the funds to be able to cover the cost of travel and registration. You'll also see an additional $162,250, which covers the cost of one FTE, which is a position to support expanding extracurricular activities, division-wide. And that was something that we got directly from, from our board. An additional support for math. You'll see two things here in math. I want to call your attention, if you looked at line item four, the additional support for elementary school math, and then also look at the last line item, which is math coaches at 13 schools. I want to lump those together. They don't, they're not side by side, but I want to talk about those at the same time. So the first one you see is additional support, two math specialists to support elementary school math. So we have one already. So the idea here is to make sure that each region, west, central, and east, has a math specialist to support those schools within the region. And then you'll also see five instructional coaches that are supporting schools across the division with high needs. When you come to the bottom, the last row here, where you see support and maintain accreditation for math in elementary school, several board members discussed in the proposal of the first budget, the need to have, like we have specialists for reading in every single school, there's a desire, I think, across the board, not just from the board, but we also believe that every school should have a math specialist. That was, the reading specialists were funded at the state level. For the math specialists, we wouldn't be able to fund those all in one fell swoop. Additionally, we have to consider staffing ability for those positions, because we know that math is a hard-to-staff position. So what we're doing is a phased approach to try to support those schools where the data suggests there's the highest need. So what you see here is there's 13 math coaches that will be school-based positions, just like the reading specialist position, to support 13 schools where we looked at their accreditation and, and determined that these were the schools that will be the most, that would have the biggest impact in having a math coach understand, or math specialist understanding that we can't fund one at every single school. What, ideally, you see the additional coaches that are specifically with a math concentration area. That's where Dr. Sullivan's team in teaching and learning will be pushing in support to get coverage across the other schools. But the, the concentration of a specific site-based specialist for math will be in those 13 schools, and we used accreditation data to, to make that determination. Then you'll see funding, the cost of summer virtual courses, such as Health PE II and Economic and Personal Finance. Funding is there to cover the cost for students to take those courses. We're also going to be covering the tuition fee for summer high school accelerated courses, so you'll see $722,000 there. We're, we're adding three additional security operations center staff for after-hour events. So several board members posited the need that, you know, while we have the, the security operations center, we have so many after-hour events that extend beyond the time that the center is open. So we'll be including these three positions specifically for nights where there's heavy after, after-hour events across the school division, so that the center is manned. Then you'll see administrative intern for high school, for high instances of Level 2 programs. This is an annual investment. We invested last year where schools that had a large number of Level 2 programs did, did get an additional admin intern to carry some of the, the case management supports there. And so you'll see this year, what we did was go back and evaluate, because year over year, the Office of Special Education looks at, at programming needs and may increase programs in specific schools. So it doesn't look the same every year. So we have to reevaluate annually to make sure that resource that we provided is still being provided equitably across the board. And so this year, based on the addition of Level 2 programs in other schools, we're adding eight admin interns. Then you'll see the next line is vape sensors. So it's beginning, the start of the next school year, we're allocating $400,000 for vape sensors in all high schools. We right now are doing a pilot for middle and high, but not all high schools actually have the vape sensors, so that $400 will go to that. Then you'll see social worker dedicated to McKinney-Vento. Our McKinney-Vento students, those are students who have instability in housing, and so there's a dedicated social, social worker position specifically for those students. They have social work support right now, but the number of students that we have that are identified as McKinney-Vento has significantly grown since the pandemic, and there is a need to have some dedicated support there. Then you'll see $214,500 to pay, to cover the cost of funding referee pay for teams that advance past the district-level competition, so that those costs are covered. That's a significant cost to schools that we're picking up. And then the department budgetary funds for science, this really is, this $100,000 is really around research and projects in support of students that's going to be housed in the science office. Then you'll see six CSOs. So where, the additional community safety officers, just to give some context here, there's been several, both community-based, as well as from our board, as well as schools that have asked about, you know, our middle schools and our high schools have SROs. Our elementary schools, we made a significant investment in security assistance in our elementary schools, but they do not have armed security. What they do have is our community security officers, who are armed, and they patrol all of our elementary schools. But right now, we have, how many do you, is it?
Sorry, we have 12 currently.
Okay, so we have a total of 12 right now. We're adding six. And then what they will do is be divided amongst the three regions, so that there's heavier coverage for each region. So they won't necessarily have the individual SRO in an elementary school, but they, they will have additional armed officers. And this way, with the addition, we'll be able to have an equal number in each of the three regions of, of security. So that's, and, and just a point of note, the SROs are staffed by Prince William County PD. We don't staff SROs, right? And we know there's a critical shortage in police officers, so there's not a path forward to staff an SRO in every single elementary school. And right now, the data doesn't necessarily suggest that that is what needs to happen. The community security officers have been very beneficial and have been supportive, and we do think that this addition will, you know, bolster the community and give a little bit more added support and protection. And it would be a layered, layered approach, because they do have the security assistance. And then you'll recall, even, I think it was just the last, the last board meeting when we did the gifted program presentation, there was a discussion by several board members with Dr. Sullivan around gifted programming supplemental funds. And the way that we currently provide supplemental support is through a flat, kind of flat rate supplement to each of the programs. But what we're doing now is we're going to keep that, but roll in a per pupil dollar amount, so that the funding that the gifted program gets will be per, per the number of students that are actually in the gifted program. And that's going to be to the tune of about $100,000. And then I've already kind of gone over the math coach support. So these are the additional investments. As you'll see, they are all directly in support of students and schools and school-based positions. And the total here for positions, as well as discretionary funds, is a total of a little over $7 million. So that is all of our additional investments in the markup, and that concludes our presentation for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. It's important to note, the board members have previously had the opportunity to share with the superintendent any additions or revisions to the proposed FY26 budget, and those have already been taken into consideration. And for that, we truly appreciate it, Dr. McDade. We will begin by going around the table to each board member for opening comments. Following open comments, we'll follow this process, which we do every year. Each board member in turn will have the opportunity to present any proposed changes they may have that may not have previously been shared with the superintendent. If there is a change, each change must be moved and seconded, followed by a discussion and a vote. No board member may speak twice about a budget change unless, unless and until all board members have spoken once about it. After all board, after all board comment is complete, the matter will be called for a vote by the chair. A change may be offered and voted on once. Should there be any changes, they'll be compiled, and a final vote on the budget with all changes incorporated will be taken. Likewise, should there be no changes to the proposed budget, a final vote will be taken to accept the budget as presented. Board members are not so bound, but otherwise pledged to each other not to offer amendments to the budget in open session as being duplicative of the work session efforts, allowing for a straight up or down vote on the budget that is reflected on the final vote of the work session. Board members may make any comments or discuss changes offered in the work session in open session. Okay, we'll move now to opening comments, and we'll start right now with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, administration. I appreciate the updates and the feedback. Like a lot of my colleagues, a number of those represent some of the things I was looking for. You know, I looked at some of the things, especially like mischtr genetic with some of the safety and security. Dr. Latif had a lot of great academic suggestions that he was focused on and paying for other areas of academic support. So there are a lot of good things that we collaborated on, and that it was great to see multiple board members push for various things that are now incorporated into this budget. I do want to say that, you know, when the sidewalks were first proposed, and I do have to give credit to McKee Little, a member of the PTO at Potomac Senior High School, for really bringing this to the forefront. It's not that this was the first time this was ever presented, but in the past, when this was investigated, there was, I'm trying to think of the right word, indecision, or it was a gray area about who owned that property. The county said, "We owned it." We said, "The county owned it," and this with the previous administration. So we really weren't able to fully tackle it, because there were disputes about who actually owned it and who was responsible for the land. Nonetheless, I'm happy now that we have acknowledged that we own it, and we are completing this project rapidly. You know, I think originally, we were thinking a multi-year kind of faceted approach, but now, April, I think.
Yes, sir. It'll start this April and be completed by the end of April.
Perfect, thank you. And, and so, very thankful for a lot of these things. You know, the armed patrol officers, I think that's something I'd like to add more, a little bit more every year. Dr. McDade and I were at a police appreciation night that Forest Park puts on annually. You know, we're very thankful, I'm very thankful, for having a resource officer in every secondary school. I know a couple of years ago, it was a goal of a large number of members of this board to ensure that we could at least get one-to-one, especially at the middle school. And originally, we didn't have that because of the number of applicants. And it's great to see over time that we're almost, I think, fully at that point with the middle schools. Is that correct, sir?
I believe we have two middle schools that share an SRO currently, but yes.
Okay, thank you. That's great. And so, overall, like I said, you know, the last two nights have been the two different PTO meetings, and I briefly brought up the budgets. And I was at Patty last night, who was a very active PTO, and they were, you know, just profusely grateful for the security support in each of the elementary school buildings. And it's not just Patty. Every elementary school, you know, it resonates with the whole community. I know originally, when we were doing security, there were people who rebuffed or didn't want to actually wear the security clothing and have the uniformity in the presence, but that has been very popular now that, you know, families know exactly, especially at middle school or high school sporting events and such, who the security is. And there is a large presence at these events, because of course, security, safety of our students is a part of the huge component of the strategic plan. Bringing the Evolve detectors out to our football and basketball sporting events and other events has been received really well. When I was at Forest Park on Monday night for their PAC meeting, we talked about a lot of this. The vape detectors were brought up, and, you know, the committee, group seemed very, you know, happy about it. We also acknowledge that it's not going to completely eradicate vaping in our schools, but it is a step in the right direction. And then, of course, the turf field coming to Forest Park, too. So overall, thank you. I'm very grateful for what was added to the budget. I'm thankful for my colleagues for adding their components to the budget. I think this is a very robust budget and continues going along with our strategic framework and our overall goal. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Mr. Dennick.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that dealt with my long list of asks. I think I, last budget season, had no idea what I was doing, because it was my first budget season. I still don't know exactly what I'm doing, but I knew that I could ask for more items and at least have a conversation. And I really appreciate Dr. McDade for being willing to discuss each item and, and even explain why or why not about certain things. One of the big ones that I just think is such a great investment are the vape sensors in the high schools. I'm a big fan of those. Something else that's smaller, but means something, is the referee pay for when teams make it past a certain point, they don't have that in their budget. The additional CSOs, I'm a big advocate for safety, so I love that. The gifted programs getting that little extra stipend based on how many people they have in their class. The social worker for McKinney-Vento is a big deal. The funds for science, I know you touched on it a little bit, Dr. McDade, but it was something that we talked about, especially, I know even Dr. Latif has talked about, science projects not being a huge focus. Can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, this, this specifically is for supplies in research classes.
Okay.
Okay? So things like beakers and test tubes for students to be able to have experimentation.
Okay.
So that's, that's particularly what that is.
But possibly to also encourage them to do
To do
Science fairs.
Yes, yes. So, so it's that, right, because it's $100,000. So it's not just all test tubes, but, but it's a combination of both, you know, when we talk about research projects, they also have to have the lab equipment to be able to conduct research and experimentation. So it's a combination of participation in science fair and then supporting students to be able to go through the research process. And so schools do need funding to be able to do that.
Awesome. The other thing is the math support. I think a lot of us had asked for that, and that's a great, a great one. I had, and the van for the high school programs, I think it's such a big deal for some of our kiddos that have to try to figure out a way to get to the, the local program, so I really appreciate that, and I know that that will be appreciated from a lot of people. I just had one more question. The additional assistant principals at the elementary school level, I know that was something that I asked for, and I know it's dependent on funding. I, I do know that there's, the reasoning behind it is to help with special ed, to help with discipline, and I know we have the new discipline admin coming. Can you just touch on that a little bit? If it's a possibility in the future?
Absolutely. So a couple of things. It is, elementary school is our largest group in terms of schools, and so it is cost prohibitive. And then the fact that we, we added the admin interns and the deans is supportive. However, we do, we are costing out right now for those schools that, for example, we have some schools that have 11 Level 2 programs. And for those schools, we do believe the admin intern isn't sufficient. And so for those schools, I do have the team right now working on providing me an evaluation of how many schools have 10 or more Level 2 programs, or schools that have significant programming, where there are, there's challenges with the admin team in, in handling that. And those would be the schools that we would prioritize to have an additional assistant principal, rather than just the admin intern.
And that's at every level.
And that, that's regardless of level. It's not just elementary, middle, or it's, it's just dependent upon the actual program. Usually, that kind of support is necessary at elementary, because they have so much less staffing, admin staffing than a high school would have, right? So that's where you typically would see more, and, and we're seeing more of the programs being placed there as well. But, but as far as future, we do, we are anticipating that we'll receive some additional funding that'll be able to support the work that we're doing in special education, particularly with admin support. So you should, the board should expect that with additional funds I would want to bring forward, that we would add some additional assistant principals to those schools that really need the additional support based on their special education programming. So that is something that I, I do want to, you know, put out now, that that is one of the things that we would want to use additional funding for. And we'll have a full evaluation for you to show which schools and why.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sargel.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. When I first started on the board, the budget process was very, I don't know, it was just kind of Wild West. I think I used that term before. I mean, Mr. Wilk, you remember how we would have the discussion about the armored car? Yes, good days.
Do you remember our budget meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to thank you, Dr. McDade, for bringing in the idea that we need to be evaluating what our programs look like, what they need, if what we are doing is working, and, and being able to, to be nimble and pivot in things. So, and, and even in our SIP, like looking at all of our properties and deciding, how are we going to evaluate what school or property needs, whatever they need, and making it easier for our principals and our school communities to be able to make those requests. So I, all of that just makes this process so much better. Like my colleague said, I'm appreciative to all these, these things that we already have in the budget and the, the ideas that the board has come up with, or things that people were concerned about. I, I'm grateful for being able to have this. Our funders need to know, our, our local taxpayers, this is really important. It's, it's, it's not easy to add things to school divisions, monies you It's not easy to add things to school divisions, money's usually pretty tight. And we find in times that we'll have things that get taken away. So, I'm really grateful that we are able to be adding things that are important and will make a difference for our students. So, thank you.
Mr. Jess.
I want to thank everyone for all that they have done with this budget. It is impressive to me, and I see that we are doing a lot of good things. You know, for some reason, I think that we are way ahead of a lot of systems, divisions and so forth with the organization, with the attention to detail that we are doing, and I think this is great. I do have one question for Mr. Fervorn, which is, I noticed you're saying that we're putting artificial turf on the practice field. Does that include the softball and hardball fields?
It does not. That includes where we had natural grass as the practice field, we're going to be taking that up and replacing that with artificial turf. One of the reasons that we, that Mr. Blake had suggested, you know, delaying Garfield was to get a little bit more of a comprehensive look, so we are looking at that. We're going to take more of a comprehensive look at some of our other schools as well. But that's something that we're taking a look at.
Okay. Thank you. But overall, I'm very impressed with the budget, and I think we are doing a lot of good things. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the comments made by my board members prior. This markup session is a lot less stressful than years gone by. I appreciate the attention to the organization and not just listening to board member comments, but from the public, from your own staff, and really getting down on the ground level to make that difference for people who work at all levels of our division. It's very much appreciated. I just had a few questions, and I don't necessarily need all the answers right now, but if you could just, when you talk about fully funding for calls for academic competition and travel and participation, what are those? And I don't need like a full list, but like just-
Yeah. I don't, we don't have like a list of ones, but for example, we do have situations that arise where a team may be going to compete and they don't have the funding. So, I'll give an example-
Like International Science Fair?
It could be, it could be any activity. I'll give an example. One of our schools, I think it was FFA that was competing, and they were, they tried to like raise the money to go, they were going to national, and they were trying to raise the money, and they couldn't raise the money. And then, we ended up, I ended up, you know, giving them the additional funding to be able to support it, but they actually asked about it, right? Like asked for the additional support. And there's sometimes situations where the school might not have it, and they don't, they don't say anything if they're not able to fundraise. So, we just want to have, in our athletics and student activities department, we want to have money available so that if a school is going to compete for anything, academic or athletics, if they have to travel, if they have to pay registration fees and the school doesn't have it in their budget, we don't want it to be a situation where students can't participate. So, I couldn't tell you that, oh, it's going to be for robotics, or it's going to be for FCLA. I can't tell you specifically, but I will tell you that we have a lot of award-winning teams and a lot of schools that compete across the board, both athletics and academics. And there are times where the schools can absorb the cost, and there's times when we have some schools that don't have the budget for it. And we want to make, we want them to know that they have a department that they can go to to say, "We're going to national," or "We're going to state," and "We need buses," or "We need registration fees," and "We have money designated for that."
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That's a major deal for most of our students and for most of our schools because travel gets more and more expensive every year, and I don't think we've ever had something like that from the division level. Because one of the things I, well, I don't talk about as much, but like schools having discretionary spending, that could look very different school to school. Most of my schools are Title I schools. Discretionary spending is usually mandatory spending. So, where at another school, it's not. So, that, I really appreciate that. The next thing I wanted to know about was, we're going to do vape sensors at all the high schools for the start of next year. Could we get a cost estimate or what it would look like to expand that to middle schools as well? I know we have some pilot programs, but lucky me, I'm a middle school parent, so I'm hearing about this all the time from the middle school level. So, I know it's, the activity is just as active. Students are getting into it at younger and younger ages, and I think a lot of them have figured out for the Evolve system, so I'll just leave it at that. The next thing, you talked a little bit about budgetary funds for science. I was wondering, if we don't have, all of our schools don't have science labs, and I know that's a process, and we're getting there, and it's going to take a while. Is there, when you talk about maybe we may be receiving additional funds, possibly putting together a plan or what it would look like for a board to look at, of maybe having mobile science labs or something of that nature? The reason why I bring that up is because I know there's been a few times in the past where students are scheduled to go on a STEM field trip, whether they can't go. So, for, I'll just use my own son, he's a 6th writer. He hasn't actually been in a science lab yet, and through no fault of the division, through no fault of his own, right? It's just something, construction here, or there's a missed field trip or a what. So, I was just, I know that those things exist. I don't know how practical they would be, but I can see that we are upping our investment in science, and I would just, I know he's not the only one. And any opportunity, I think, for students to do more hands-on learning would be great, and that's not to undervalue the lab. The Think Big Center at River Oaks, those are wonderful, but they're also for students who are absolutely dedicated to a career in science, the level of rigor that they're looking for, or the extra participation I think we're missing out on. And so, not asking for it now because I don't know if it's still a thing, but if we could look into that, if there are additional funds, that would be fantastic. And when we talk about special ed and adding interns, do we have, one of the things that I had heard this year, and I'm not sure if it's gotten better, is just a little bit of extra staff for the buffering, like the difference between TAs and our special ed teachers and having their schedules. And I don't know if interns help with that. Is that something that would also provide some cushion for our teachers during the day? Like say, there's someone out, you can't find a sub, that kind of thing. Do we have any breathing room in those areas for our special eds? Because I know they're, they're in the classroom all day. We generally have a hard time finding special ed teachers, and so I don't know if there's anything position-wise or if that's part of what that person would be doing, or how we could sort of build some cushion around our special ed teachers.
I don't know that that's like legally, like I don't know, the teacher has to provide the instruction to the student, and so the coverage is based on the instructional actual minutes in the day. But you'll see, we made a significant investment to add additional TAs, so that's above and beyond what would be required in the classroom. And so, Dr. Ryer has done a lot to take a hard look at the programming to make sure that not only the required number of TAs are there, but we've added additional support. So, I know teachers have been appreciative of that, but outside of adding the additional TAs and then adding the support for the case management, I mean, the teacher is the teacher of record to provide instruction, so there's no way to, you know, remove time from the day for them. They would, they would have to deliver instruction for the full instructional day, and of course, they do get the same, you know, duty-free lunch and things like that in their preparation periods that every other teacher gets, but they do have the additional. We did try to provide some additional human capital in those classrooms to support the teachers by way of the teaching, the teaching assistants, and we've added quite a bit. This year is 50, but Dr. Ryer, do you, can you recall the total? 300, so to the tune of 350.
Okay. Thank you. We just really haven't talked about that for a while, and I think it's just now the best time to bring that up. So, thank you, Dr. Ryer, for, I'm moving because I can't see you. Thank you, Dr. Ryer, for looking at that program and building that in. I didn't quite phrase it right, but you hit the nail on the head, and I really appreciate that, and I know our teachers do, too. And again, just general thank you for keeping us informed and really being on point about what we're hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I want to start out by saying that I think this is a great budget. I think that the pay scale initiative is the biggest thing in this budget, and it is very, what I'm hearing, it's very welcome, and the staff really appreciates it. It is a significant investment. If you look, like the average salary increase over the last five years is absolutely stunning. So, I want to highlight that and say that I appreciate that, and I think hopefully we'll see some returns on that investment in happier students, happier staff, and great results in academics and on and off the field also. So, with those general remarks being said, I also appreciate and acknowledge that our top priorities are reflected in this budget, which I appreciate. I also appreciate the process of the strategic plan driving the investments. I also see that is happening in this budget, which I also want to draw attention to and appreciate and acknowledge. And that is also true for the CIP. I appreciate the fidelity to taking a look at our facilities and our fields and evaluating where our needs are and prioritizing our investments based on the data that we're collecting and the knowledge that we have of our facilities. So, thank you very much to the team that worked hard on that and including the evaluation of the turf practice fields, which for our student athletes is going to be huge, to see that compression of the schedule and to be able to get all those other high schools up and running with a turf practice field. I think it would make a big difference. I really focus on academics because that's where my heart lies, but I do know that the athletics make a big difference for our students. They love the athletics. It's often a way that they achieve their personal dreams on and off the field, so I really want to thank everybody for working hard on that. Couple of things that I appreciate in particular and want to highlight is the additional, I mean, I know this is 7 million additional funds. That's a, that's a big number, and I really appreciate it. The covering of summer virtual courses such as HPE 1 and 2 and Econ and Personal Finance, that's been a big thing for kids when, that sticker shock when you want to, you want to take, you know, an advanced course and marching band, and then you want to take a summer course, and then the price is $400. It's really hard for some families. Even if they can afford it, they often complain about it, you know, because it's a lot of money. So, I do really appreciate that. I think that's going to make a big difference. Also, covering the tuition fee for summer high school accelerated courses, kids who want to get a jump on so they can take some of our other electives in our, that we offer, and we offer so many really great electives, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to highlight that I particularly like the investment for supplementing elementary school gifted programs to bring a little bit more, I guess, I don't know if the word is parody, but, you know, flat rate supplement plus the roll-in per pupil cost. I think that'll make it easier on our schools to do what they need to do with the gifted and talented programs and really reach out to more kids in an effective way. And these additional supports for math education, math, elementary school specialists and science education, sorry, elementary specialists, I think that is also going to make a difference. And while those are essentially, they're centrally-based positions, they are directly reaching into the schools. And I think that's really important to notice that while we have central staff, they are giving direct support to schools, and that should make a difference for our teachers. That gives teachers support and hopefully will make their jobs easier as they help kids. So, overall, any further thoughts from me? If we should have additional funds, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to make that, but I do know that we have, in the music department, sometimes instrument repair can be expensive for schools, especially in band when you have needs for that. And I don't know how we fund that, but that might be something that could really help our schools out. Also, additional money for sheet music, music rights to like a band show, things like that, that schools do often bear the cost of to get appropriate music and instrument repair and replacement. So, that might be something that if we did have additional funds, we could, we could take a look at supporting from a central office position. And other than that, I really appreciate it, and I want to say thank you to everybody who worked hard on this budget. I know you've probably been breathing, eating, living this for months, so I'm sure you're happy to see us be coming to the end of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased with the progress we've made this year on this budget, and I believe that it is a strong, forward-thinking budget that not only aligns with our needs of the community, but also reflects the goals of our strategic plan. And I just want to take a moment to thank the superintendent and all of our staff for the commitment to listening to the school board and taking into consideration of what we all said and reflecting it in this markup. And I really appreciate it, and thank you, everything they all said. So, thanks.
Okay. Great. So, going back to the main part of the proposed budget, I am, you know, really excited. The fact that this budget does reflect our values, it reflects our strategic plan, you know, just for me, the highlights really are, you know, we've added more special ed teacher assistants. We've added behavior specialists, graduation coaches, school psychologists, and kindergarten teaching assistants. All of these positions will help all students regardless of what level they are at. A behavior specialist, a school psychologist can help all students, not just gifted students or students with English learner. These are all students. So, the commitment in this budget, everyone should really recognize is that the dollars being invested here are for all children, not just particular groups of kids or certain demographics. They are really thoughtful investments that will impact all students across all grade levels, and I think that's truly appreciative. I'm very grateful for the additional investments, specifically, very happy to see that we are going to be able to fund and cover some of the high school summer courses. The tuition for summer classes is, and, you know, is, and can be expensive for many, and I appreciate that. I think that's a great investment. That's about $1 million going to help pay for students. And again, that's all students, right? That's any student who wants to do those programs, and I think that's really important, and I think families should really take advantage of that program. I really appreciate the other aspects of the additional investments that we're doing. Many of these are based on science and math, areas that I think we have a lot of work to do and a lot of, a lot to make up since the pandemic especially. And so, I truly appreciate that effort and the commitment, the continued commitment that this board has and the superintendent to safety and security for having more folks in the security office. What do we call that? SOC? SOC?
Security Operations Center.
Security Operations Center. Right. Center. And so, very good. Okay. Those are the, just my comments. We'll move now to the second part of workup, is if anyone has any proposed changes. Does anyone have a proposed change?
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, sir. Give me one second. Sorry. I wrote this right before. Usually, when my mind is most fluid, and I wanted to have it written, so I projected the right tone on this and put some more context. And this has to do with the CIP, a recommended change. I'm going to put forward. I didn't really lobby anyone for this. I guess we'll just go how it is to see if I could get support for this. But for the past few years, I have been asked by community members and elected officials, what are we going to do with Dumfries? Before I joined the board in 2016, Dumfries Elementary underwent renovations in the early 2000s. I do not know the story of what occurred, but I have heard rumors that the district had the option to renovate the existing building with primarily interior upgrades and some exterior changes, or to pursue a complete overhaul with the possible multi-story expansion. My understanding is that the previous representative opted to preserve the building's historical nature and focus more on interior renovations. While changes were made inside, trenchant disparities remain. There is no loading dock, forcing boxes to be stored in the main office. The gym is nearly one-third the size of those in my other schools. The cafeteria is the smallest I have seen in any elementary school. Two years ago, the Dumfries Town Council held their swearing and ceremony at the school. The feedback was staggering. Elected officials from across the county couldn't believe how small the cafeteria was. When I showed them gymnasium, they were shocked. Dumfries Elementary is landlocked and surrounded by homes in a historic slave cemetery. I believe the only viable option is to rebuild part of the structure and add a second floor. I want to acknowledge that, based on my research, the same amount of money, based on the division's research, I should say, was spent on Dumfries as other elementary school renovations at the time. I also understand the division conducted a sagacious facilities assessment. Despite these trenchant concerns, the building is filled with dedicated staff and happy families. I rarely hear complaints, and every time I visit, I am greeted by a friendly and collaborative team. The building is well-lit, the floors are- The building is well-lit, the floors are spotless, and the walls showcase vibrant murals and student work. This is not the first time I have pushed for change, and likely will not be my last. As the Potomac District Representative, I must uphold my community's trust and advocate for equal resources across all schools. Tonight, my ask, I'm seeking the board to support moving Dumfries Elementary from the 29 renovation renewal year to FY '27, ensuring that the issues hitherto overlooked are finally addressed.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. Ms. Mc, Dr. McDade, do you want to make any comments on that?
Well, well, first, I'll say, you know, I do understand some of the concerns that Mr. Wilk has brought forward. However, I will just remind the board that in our strategic plan, we committed to evaluating all of our facilities to ensure that in our CIP, there is a, a strong rationale for every facility that needs a renovation or needs support, that shows that we're prioritizing the buildings that are in the most need. So that's not to say that Dumfries does not need additional support to their facilities. However, we did share with the board the full facilities assessment that showed the schools that were in the poorest condition in terms of their facilities, and those are the buildings that you see prioritized in the CIP. And while Dumfries certainly can benefit from additional renovation, they did have a renovation, do you recall what year that was?
I don't have that date.
Okay, well, we, we did share with, with the Dumfries Town Council, the mayor of Dumfries, the actual date of the last renovation that was, that, you know, the board was, some of the board members here were a part of. And we also shared with you the facilities assessment for Dumfries in comparison to other schools in the school system, and right now, they are not the school that has the most dire need in terms of facilities renovation. And I'm, I'm really, really excited about the fact that the board supported going down the path of hiring the external evaluator so that there's fairness in our CIP. And I personally believe that we should stay the course in ensuring that those schools that are showing in the orange or in the red are prioritized, because in some instances, even from a safety perspective, you know, we do need to address those facilities first.
Any further comments, Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that. I understand your, your, your thoughts behind that, and the logic to your rationale. If, well, first, I don't know if anyone was on this board when it first occurred, because if we subtract 25 years from 2029, it definitely, I, I was not on the board, and Ms. Williams, you've been longer than me, I don't think, so it was prior to this board's terms, but I just wanted to add that. So, yeah, just wanted to put that there.
Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Mr. Wilk's motion for moving the Dumfries renovations up, signal with a hand raise? Any opposed? All opposed? Hands up? Okay, opposition wins. Moving on next to, who's next? Anybody have anything else to add, to markup? Any other proposals? Okay.
Dr. Latif, could I just add, you know, I was listening to.
Do you want to add something to the budget?
No, no, I do, but I don't have any money, so we don't, we're, we're done until we get some additional funding. But I just wanted to respond to two things. One, Ms. Wall, in terms of the, just because I know that if we do get additional money, I want to make sure that I'm addressing some of the things that I did here tonight. And Ms. Wall, you asked about additional money for the instruments and repair, and I just do want to remind everyone that that's, I do want to reassure you that we have money in the budget for that already. Just a refresher, last year, we did, we added $169,514 increase, so now we're at a total of $425,000 for, to support music instruments and repair. And then the other thing I wanted to call out was, Ms. Williams, with the special education, you know, I know you were probably referring to almost teacher burnout with special education. In addition to what I, I didn't think about was, in addition to the TAs, remember we, in the original proposal, we did add the 15 behavioral specialists, which is a support too, for, and, and, and Dr. Ryer, I just want to give some credit to Dr. Ryer. When she came in, she did a kind of an overhaul and looked at all of the positions and worked collaboratively with the CFO, and so now we have additional teachers to support inclusion, and so that's a big benefit as well. And those are two things I, I didn't think of, so I just want to thank you, Dr. Ryer, for bringing that to my attention.
If we're in the business asking for more, when more comes, you can just refer to my list and take a look at the fact that I still am pushing for more guidance counselors, or career, college and career counselors at the, at the high schools. Okay, great, thank you all for that. Are we in the work session, final markup, votes accepted? Okay, so as, as presented, I need a motion. Mr. Blake? I'll move. I move that the Prince William County School Board accept the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented in this evening's work session and final markup. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any, all those in favor? Hands up. All those opposed? No opposition, motion passes. Okay.
I moved that the Prince William County School Board accept.
No, we don't have to do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we're, we're good. We have no changes, right? Did I get that right, council? Okay, all right. That being no further action before this board, this meeting is adjourned.